Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first session of the Summit City Council for the year 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President Naidoo.
Here. Okay, thank you. I would now like to call on Henry Basman to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And tonight we have a ceremonial award, the first time we are doing an outstanding volunteer, and I call upon our Mayor Nora Radus.
Since there's more of them than us, I'm gonna face it. (laughter) Good evening, and thank you very much for coming tonight. Many of you have heard me say that Summit's best asset is its core of volunteers. These men and women enable our city to be the best that it can be. Their countless hours of service are invaluable. Tonight, members of council and I are establishing an award to be presented annually honoring an outstanding volunteer in our community. When we thought of who deserved this award, the quote, "Being male is a matter of birth; being a man is a matter of age; but being a gentleman is a matter of choice." Thus, it should be no surprise that I want to introduce Thomas O'Rourke as the first recipient of the Outstanding Volunteer Award.[236.62][236.62](applause) Now, many of you know Tom, but for those who don't, I just want to share a little bit of his history. Tom O'Rourke has been a resident of Summit for more than 43 years, and he and his wonderful wife Laura raised their two children here, both of whom were educated in the Summit Schools. Tom was an undergraduate -- has an undergraduate degree in finance from the University of St. Thomas in Minnesota, and received additional graduate work at both Syracuse and Harvard University's Program for Management Development. His career included executive roles at Maytag, American Express, Citicorp, and CIT Group. Tom played for the St. Louis Cardinals in the minor leagues and was called up for a cup of coffee, having the honor of having a locker next to Hall of Famer Stan Musial. His love of sports, baseball in particular, led him to coach American Legion baseball for 10 years, from 1982 to 1992. Tom served on the juvenile conference from 1999 to 2001. He served on the Summit Joint Fields Committee and the Board of Recreation from 1996 to 2000, serving as president in 1999. He served on the city's Master Plan Committee in 2000. Upon retirement in 2000, he began driving for the Summit chapter of the American Red Cross. He has many stories to tell from those days and derived much satisfaction from assisting so many in the surrounding area to get to and from doctor's appointments and dialysis. In 2001, he became president of the Board of the Summit Chapter. Tom was very instrumental in hiring Christie Hotty as executive director and appointing many new board members. Together with the Board, the Summit chapter rose to be a premier American Red Cross chapter, with Tom and Christie traveling to Washington, D.C. for an award. In 2003, former member -- former Mayor Walter Long appointed Tom to the Board of Education, where he served an unprecedented three terms, nine years. He was very busy during that time, with more meetings and brainstorming with administrators than he had ever imagined. I know Tom loved every minute of those nine years, and he was proud of all the achievements of the Summit public schools. He was a strong supporter of the faculty, and he believed that students should have the opportunity to excel in academics, athletics, and the arts. And I know he was most pleased with the Board's strides in addressing and closing the achievement gap. Tom served on the Transfer Station Redevelopment Committee from 2005 to 2008, and the O'Rourke family members have been parishioners of St. Teresa's for many years. And not surprisingly, Tom served on the Finance Committee at St. Teresa's for several years and co-chaired a capital campaign raising over $5 million for major improvements to the church in the early years of this millennium. Most recently, Tom served on the founding nomination committee for the Summit High School Athletic Hall of Fame, and served in a key role of selling tens of thousands of dollars of advertising space to help fund scholarships for deserving Summit High School graduates. And again in 2017, he served on the committee continuing to raise funds for scholarships. While Tom's dedicated service to Summit is remarkable, what is more remarkable is how he conducted himself in all of his endeavors. When you worked with Tom, you knew he was fully engaged and ready to tackle any task. His quick wit and warm smile encouraged camaraderie, and his keen intellect drove his ability to solve even the toughest of problems. Tom, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You have been a wonderful role model and mentor to me and many of our fellow residents.[460.11][460.11](applause)
You might imagine I'm a bit overwhelmed. I would like to thank Mayor Nora Radus, Council President Dave Naidoo, and the common council for the honor of this award. As mentioned, I've been a resident, my family, of Summit for 45 years, having moved there with my family in 1973. I have lived and visited many places in my life, and I can say unequivocally that Summit is the best of all. The diversity and the quality of the services and programs in Summit is extraordinary. But this community is great because of its people, especially those who work on behalf of the city, and especially those who volunteer their time. I have truly enjoyed all my volunteer opportunities for, as diverse as they have been. As a coach, I was able to work directly with some very fine young men. Later as chairman and president, I had the opportunity to work with some remarkably talented colleagues who were every bit as dedicated to Summit as I. In those collaborative moments, whether there is agreement, intercession, whether there is running smoothly or not, I know how fortunate my family and I were to be living in this community. I am grateful for my years of service, and I'm grateful for the many people who continue to serve this community. Again, thank you, Mayor Radus, President Naidoo, and the common council, and also President Jordan Platt.
Nora, Nora, can you ask him for a statement so we can put it in the record?
He's leaving.
Oh. Yeah, statement.
Tom?
(inaudible).
We'll take like a two-minute break while people leave and reshuffle here.
I thought they might be.
Cause they're rich.
(inaudible).
Okay, let's go back on in session. Now going back to our agenda. We'll now look at the minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session for the meeting of December 19, 2017?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
First. I'll nominate.
You'll vote? Okay.
Mary Simmons. Okay. We need a roll call then.
No. Council President, you just probably, and I'll defer to the city solicitor. Do only the 2017 council who are still on -- need to vote on the 2017 minutes only?
Yes.
Yeah, then we have a roll call.
All right, let me do a roll call then. Okay. Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye. And now for a motion to approve the minutes for the organizational meeting on January 8th, 2018.
Still moved. Second.
Roll call.
You can just say one.
Oh, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Nope. Okay, passes. All right, moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the Department of Community Services launched an online building and construction permit system on January 2nd. The new system allows citizens to track permit applications through the approval process, fulfill Open Publics Records Act requests, and perform routine property record searches online. Staff have been trained on the system, and we currently have 32 public users and look forward to expanding our use throughout the year. I am pleased to announce a scholarship opportunity that I am offering through the New Jersey State League of Municipalities for high school juniors and seniors from Summit. There are three $1,000 scholarships available through the Lois Bay Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. The theme is, quote, "What my municipal government does best," and seeks to advance the virtues of elected and volunteer members of municipal government. The deadline is March 9th, and details are available at cityofsummit.org. My next Meet the Mayor event is on this coming Saturday, January 20th, from 1:30 to 3:00 at Batavia Cafe, so please stop by if you have anything you'd like to discuss. And then lastly, on Saturday as well, in the morning, the Dominican monastery of Our Lady of the Rosary has raised money in the community to do a 5,500-square-feet expansion and renovation. There'll be rooms for their extra visitors, ADA access, and due to the increased number of vocations, they need to use their -- they're gonna change their office space and to -- and workrooms into living rooms, rooms for their monastic cells. So the groundbreaking is this coming weekend, and they hope to be done in 2019, which will be the centenary anniversary of the founding of the Dominican Nuns here in Summit. So, that's it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers, our city administrator, for his report. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give an update to the public. City administration and the council's Finance Committee are now fully engaged in the 2018 municipal budget process. The Finance Committee is reviewing budgets with department heads. We still have some work to do, but I believe our municipal budget this year will reflect financial stability that adequately supports our high level of service delivery and steadfastly adheres to our -- the city's sound fiscal policies. At this time, I believe we are on track to present the city's operating and capital budgets for introduction at the March 20th council meeting. An update from our -- on our animal control services. City of Summit is now contracting with Animal Control Solutions to provide these services. Residents can call 908-722-1271 for assistance with sick or orphaned wildlife, dead animal pickup, bite accident investigation, and rabies quarantine. Animal Control Solutions also offers dog and cat adoption events at local businesses and online. Please visit Summit's website or animalcontrolsolutions.org for more information on assistance and services offered. Curbside Christmas tree pickup continues through Friday, January 26. Please remove all decorations before placing trees at the curb, and please do not place trees in plastic bags. Wreaths cannot be collected curbside with Christmas trees, but you can dispose of wreaths in household trash or bring to the upper-level trash area at the transfer station. And finally, here's something to look forward to now that probably when we leave this meeting, it's gonna be snowing, but opening day for the Summit Family Aquatic Center is Saturday, May 26, 2018, at 11:00 a.m. Online registration for the summer 2018 season is now open at summitcommunityprograms.com, or you can call 908-277-2932 for assistance. And that's all for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Given the cold weather we've been experiencing, I'm sure we're all looking forward to being able to dip into a pool. I have the council president's report and talk about a historical minute, which typically is done by a Summit High School student, and so I'm gonna pinch-hit and piggyback off what Madam Mayor said with regard to the Dominican Nuns building, which was actually constructed in the 1920s, 1930s. Probably one of the interesting aspects of it is that they originally envisioned a four-winged cloister, but then the Depression happened, and so there was no funds for it. So it's taking a little bit of time, but there's an expansion going on after that. Now moving on to presentations. The first presentation is with regard to hometown heroes, and I'd ask Michael Arline to come up to give the presentation. Michael?
Thank you. Is there a clicker?
Right beside it, to the right.
This thing here. So I press it to the right, it'll answer. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Mike Arline, and I'm here to present on hometown heroes, and I want to thank the members of the council for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm here to propose a new initiative for the city called Hometown Heroes, which will give recognition to the brave men and women of our city who are serving or who have served in the armed forces. So often in our society, veterans are ignored or forgotten. The horrors of violence and war are so far removed from our daily lives that we often take our freedoms for granted and we forget that there are heroes among us who put their own lives at risk to guarantee those freedoms. I'm the father of three young children. If I ask my children to name someone they know who served in the armed forces, or even what a veteran is, I'm not sure they would know. They would probably name George Washington or someone they learned about in history class. I want my children and all of our children to know that our freedoms are guaranteed not by some abstract mythical individuals from the history books, but by our neighbors, our friends, and the brave members of our police, fire, and emergency services, many of whom are veterans. I want our children to see the faces of our veterans and to learn their stories and their struggles. I want to provoke discussion with our children about sacrifice and service. I want to teach our children to honor and respect our veterans and to hold them up as role models and real-life heroes in our community. In that spirit, I'm here to propose what is really just a small gesture, and hopefully one of many yet to come, to honor the veterans and active-duty servicemen and women in our community. The proposal entails bringing to Summit a program called Hometown Heroes that has existed for several years in Berkeley Heights in New Providence. In the remainder of this presentation, I'll run through how the program works and how it will be funded and publicized. So this is a hometown hero banner. I have a prop. Now, before I -- before anyone points it out, there's a spelling error on this, which is why I'm able to share it as a -- as an example of a banner. It says "active duty" is spelled incorrectly at the bottom. This is from New Providence. Okay. I'll leave this up here. I'm just gonna sit here. So the banner has the name and the picture of a member of our community who's active duty or a veteran, along with their service branch, dates of service or campaign. The banners attached to brackets, which hang from lampposts or telephone poles. You may have seen them in New Providence and Berkeley Heights. There are several different locations for the banners under consideration. DeForest Avenue between Norwood and Summit Avenue, which is pictured there, is one possible location, and there are a lot of lampposts there, if anyone's ever noticed. And the streets surrounding the Village Green are another possibility, and there, the banners would be hung on telephone poles. And we've been in touch with JCPN, who approved the use of telephone poles in New Providence and who indicated support for the project here in Summit. And the proposal is for the banners to hang from each year from Memorial Day through Independence Day. And with us, consistent with what other towns have done, and some towns have also rehung them around Veterans Day, but that's not what I'm proposing this time. The eligibility requirements were developed in consultation with Henry Basman of the American Legion, who's here today. An individual will be eligible to apply for -- to have a banner if he or she lived or worked in Summit at any time in the past or present, and is active duty, retired, honorably discharged, or killed in action in one of the five branches of the U.S. Armed Forces. And an individual who served in the Merchant Marines or Women Air Force Service Pilots during World War II will also be eligible. And a deceased individual, just to be clear, can be honored by his or her family. There'll be a sign-up sheet that can be submitted electronically or by mail. It will be available on the city's website, at the library, at City Hall, and other locations. In the first year, we aim to hang 50 banners, which would honor 100 veterans. The banners are double-sided. And that would be comprised of the first 90 applicants who meet the eligibility requirements, plus an additional 10 selected based on special merit, as determined in consultation with the American Legion. We'll publicize the program in various ways. We'll have flyers, word of mouth, social media. We'll rely on local organizations, like the American Legion and Summit else. And we recognize it's important that the banners reflect the diversity of individuals in our community who've served, so we'll need to make sure that the program is well-publicized among all different aspects of our community. Banners cost $68 each, and the brackets to hang them range from $80 to $300 per set, depending on whether they're gonna hang on lampposts or telephone poles. The brackets are cheaper for telephone poles. The funds will be provided by private donations, and the city will not be asked to contribute any funds. The city's role will be limited to hanging and removing the banners. Summit Area Public Foundation, 501(c)(3) Community Foundation, has kindly agreed to set up a charitable fund to receive tax-deductible donations for the project. I'd like to thank the Board of SAPF and particularly Frank Maciosi, who spent a lot of time with me working out the details of this arrangement. SAPF will use the funds to purchase the brackets and banners on behalf of the city. The idea is that the fund will last for five years, at which time any remaining funds not used for brackets and banners will be donated to Bonds of Courage and Community Hope, which are two local charities that support veterans. As I said in my opening remarks, I hope this is just the start of how we can think about ways to honor veterans in our community. It'd be my hope that the program could expand beyond the initial 50 banners in future years. And it's also my hope that students or others may take an interest from this project in learning more about our veterans, and might, for example, create an archive to hear their stories and preserve their stories, and anything else that anyone thinks of as they're impacted by this project. So that's it for my prepared remarks, and if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for taking the initiative of doing this project. You have worked very hard, I know, to get this to where it is right now, and I know it's very important to you, and I think also we're very cognizant of the fact that you want to do this by Memorial Day, therefore time is relatively short in order to be able to get going on it. And I understand your need to have council to make decisions on it in order for you to move forward. But before we open up for council questions, I want to ask if there's members of the public who want to say something, or have comments, or questions. Henry?
Good evening. I'm Henry Basman. I live at 18 Hartley Road here in Summit, and I'm the commander of Lindsay Street Post 322, the American Legion District of New Jersey, which is our local American Legion post. First, I'd like to read into the record a letter that I sent to the mayor and members of common council previously, and then I'd like to give you some examples of some of the people in our community who share in the rich heritage of military service in Summit. As I have become more involved with veterans' activities in Summit, I've been impressed with a large number of veterans in our community. Most of them go about their daily lives, asking for no recognition or special consideration. Summit veterans represent every race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, and political persuasion in our community. They are bound together by their former service. Their brotherhood and sisterhood as veterans transcends any other difference to their circumstances. Unless they wear a distinctive hat or lapel pin, they are invisible even to fellow veterans. But even more importantly, they are unrecognized by the youth of our community. It is important to many of us that our young people learn that service to our country is an honorable endeavor and can be beneficial to those who serve for the rest of their lives. Our local veterans are known mostly for their participation in civic and fraternal organizations and for their voluntary service to our community. Many common council members have been ex-service members. Murray Ross, the longest-serving president of the common council body, Frank Laird, Dave Bobgars, Frank Maciosi, Rich Matten, Pat Hurley, and many others continue to serve their community, state, and nation after they hung up their uniforms. As the commander of Summit's Lindsay Street Post 322, Department of New Jersey, I'm representing our post's members who endorse this proposal to recognize those who served our country. Our post is committed to assisting with the identification and validation of candidates for inclusion in the Hometown Heroes banners. We encourage common council to endorse and support the proposal before you today. We also encourage common council and the city administrators to expedite this project so the banners can be erected in time for Memorial Day 2018. I mentioned before that we have a rich heritage of military service in this community. I mentioned before that we have a rich heritage of military service in this community. Elwood Cornok, Rome the Fieldhouse is named, was a gunner in World War II in a tank who destroyed nine German tanks, which earned him a seat in the Tankers Hall of Fame. Bob Max recently wrote and had published a book about his capture by Nazi soldiers and being put to work not as a prisoner of war, but as a slave laborer through the winter of 1944-45. Frank Goldstein, who was severely frostbitten in his feet while standing on the line in Korea. Ilrap, whom many of you know, who was both a Green Beret and a helicopter pilot in Vietnam. Ken Hare, known for his work in the Summit Rescue Squad, who in Vietnam was an F-4 Phantom pilot for the Marine Corps. I should call him a Marine Corps aviator. Then there was David Morton and Ty Holmes, recent high school graduates, both of whom have been medically discharged recently after their services in Iraq and Afghanistan. And now there are students such as Sophie Reitz-Borin, who are attending military and naval academies, or who are enrolled in ROTC. But you mentioned special merit veterans, and I want to recall for some of you the two most special-merited veterans in our community. Sergeant Alan Eggers and Corporal Thomas O'Shea, both of whom earned the Medal of Honor in World War I as members of the 107th Machine Gun Company, known as the Summit Gunners. These were truly amazing men, and I have here pictures of the two men, which you can pass around if you'd like. Thank you. The citation for their Medal of Honor, and incidentally, it was the only incident then or to this day where three men received the Medal of Honor for the same engagement. Their citation reads, "Becoming separated from their platoon by a smoke barrage, Sergeant Alan Eggers and Corporal Thomas O'Shea of Summit, New Jersey, with Sergeant John C. Latham of Rutherford, New Jersey, took cover in a shell hole well within the enemy's lines. Upon hearing a call for help from an American tank, which had become as disabled 30 yards from them, the three soldiers left their shelter and started toward the tank under heavy fire from German machine guns and trench mortars. In crossing the fire-swept area, Corporal O'Shea was mortally wounded, but his companions, undeterred, proceeded to the tank, rescued the wounded officer, and assisted two wounded soldiers to cover in the bend of a nearby trench. Sergeant Eggers and Sergeant Latham then returned to the tank in the face of violent fire, dismounted a Hotchkiss machine gun, and took it back to where the wounded men were keeping off the enemy all day by effective use of the gun, and later bringing the gun with the wounded men back to American lines under the cover of darkness." These are the kinds of people we need to remember forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Henry. Henry, if you could give us your statement.
Say again.
Oh, oh, you've given us the statement?
What would you like? I have copies of everything.
You have the copy of the statement? Just?
I believe it's the same letter you sent me, Mr. Bassman.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I won't need it.
But this is, uh, this is a copy of the letter, and this is the citation on behalf of the Congress.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Henry. You know, you hear these descriptions of people who get the Medal of Honor, and it's really just incredible people, what they've done.
Absolutely.
Makes you extremely proud of the country we live in. Are there any other public comments?
That's a tough act to follow.
It is indeed.
Lou DiSocio, 17 Stiles Road. I happen to be the veteran chairman for the Elks. How do you follow that? When Bob Took came, came to me and proposed this endeavor, I sort of understood what he was up against, because I've tried to do several things in this town. We tried to get a Purple, uh, Purple Heart Monument for the, for the, for the Greens, twice, didn't work out. So, I hope this goes through. I support him. The Elks support him. And I'd like to thank the council for considering this. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lou. Please, come up and...
Hi. I'm Allison Lays. I live at 22 Windsor Road in Summit, and Michael Arline and I have been friends for a long time. I'm gonna cry, because this is something he called me. I sold Michael his house. I work at Louis Schneider, and he knows my husband is a veteran, and my husband's whole family is a veteran, and he told me about this project he wanted to bring to Summit. And I was so flattered that he thought of me to bring, help, um, bring this awareness. And all I know is, at Louis Schneider, we promote Summit as being such a family town, and that's how we support just everything. The Friday Night Lights, the whole, that's why we have such a great town, our education and all that. And the veterans, just, it's just one more thing to say, we are such a family town. I hope you consider this. I'll tell you a little story. Well, first of all, after Michael had asked me, I immediately said, of course, you can count on me for anything, I'll help market it. I called Karen Schneider, and she said, we will help market it in any way, get the word out there. And Michael knows, he had spoken to Karen and all that. But, um, just a real cute story, and I'll leave it at that. I was in the post office the other day, and this gentleman was in front of me, and there's a long line, and he had on his general cap or his army hat. And we're sitting there, and we're all waiting, and, you know, it's a long time, and I just tapped him on his shoulder, and I said, you know, thank you for your service. And he said, he said, "Thank you for saying that to me." And he immediately went into his wallet, and he pulled out his wallet, and he gave me his card. And I said, "Oh." And he said, "Here, I was a general, and I live on Dale Drive." I said, "Well, I just want to let you know, I'm, I'm talking about this Hometown Hero project." He said, "Oh, are you working with Michael Arline?" And I said, "Yes." And, um, and I said, and he said, "Well, here's my card." I said, "Well, we'll be calling you for a picture." And he was so thrilled, and he turned around and he said, "Thank your husband and his family for their service." So, I totally support this, I'll help in any way. I told Michael that, so will Louis Schneider, and I hope that the council will take heed and consider this great project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Let me just acknowledge also SAPF, Frank Maciosi, behind the scenes also did a fabulous job of getting things together, Henry Bassman, DiSocio, uh, Louis Schneider for, and Karen Schneider for all the efforts. I want to open up to council. As, as I indicated, this is something, given the timeframe we're talking about, I want to make sure that every member of council has an opportunity to ask as many questions as they want, because, you know, depending on what the results are, we'll try to move this forward to the next council meeting. So, anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Matt?
For city administrator Rogers, how much extra work would it be for the city workers to put it, to put the banners up and take them down, and would it be very onerous for them?
I can't speak to the number of hours. I'm not sure what's involved, other than, I think it's just fixing the banner to, there's existing brackets on Broad Street, I believe. There, I believe we've determined there's something on Broad Street that would work. DeForest is a different issue.
There are no existing banners in town. We would have to install the banners, which is a one-time event.
Right.
And then hanging the banners and removing the banners is, is probably not such a big deal. I think they just slip on the brackets.
Right.
But in the first year, there, there will be work installing the brackets.
Right. So there, again, it, I'm not sure that men, hours required. Aaron, do you have any sense, through your discussions with Paul?
It would take, the first year, yeah, it's a little more time-consuming to put the brackets up, much like the Holiday Reefs downtown, the first year, there's, there's always a little more time. The banners themselves will, will slide on relatively easy. I mean, you're, you're talking 10, 12 an hour, at, at least, once they're up, so I'd have to guess, maybe say three per hour, just to install the brackets the first time, so, depending on the quantity, it could be a day's work.
Paul Cascades had told me it was going to be about a day's, a day and a half worth of work, worth of work, was his guess.
Okay, and question for Mr. Arline. I guess the two, I mean, I, I think this is great, first of all. The two questions, I would have, the two problems I would see is if, if we don't get enough, and if we get too many, you know, people that want them. So if you don't get enough, what's the minimum number where it doesn't make any sense to not, you know, to put them up, and what's, and then what if we get, you know, 500? What, what do we do then?
Thank you. I don't really think we're gonna have a problem getting 100. If you think about it, it's open to people who lived or worked in Summit at any time in the, in the past or present. If we publicize it, I think if just merely the historic veterans, you know, is 10 from Henry, and then, you know, if we, if we publicize this among the members of our police, fire, and EMS, I don't see any concern getting, getting 100. I think the other problem of getting more, too many is, is more the issue. And the other towns, by the way, New Providence, Berkeley Heights, which I think are smaller than Summit, easily got 100 and more than 100 in their, in their first round of recruiting. If we get too many, as I said, it's, it's gonna have to be limited in the first year to the first 90 applicants who meet the eligibility requirements. I think we would accept further applications, and in future years, if we found additional locations and raised additional money, we could hang more banners on new, in new locations, or if we have a limited number of locations, we could simply produce more banners, which are $68 each, that covers two veterans, it's not a big expenditure, and then rotate the banners on the existing, on the existing brackets.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Where will the banners be stored between July 4th and Memorial Day, once they're taken down? Who would be responsible for maintaining them?
That's a good question. I hadn't actually thought of that. I think I've thought of just about everything, but I hadn't thought of that. I, I would hope maybe the city would be willing to store them somewhere. That's a question for the folks that store things in the city, but I will offer my basement if no, no one, if the city's unable to store them.
And I want to thank you for all the work you've done on this, too. This is a, a big project you've taken on, and I think it's an important one for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mike?
Yeah, so I, um, I'm working now in New Providence, so I've been driving there pretty much every day, and, and they were up over Veterans' Day, I think, there. And it's like, wow, this is pretty cool. It was really great, and it, you could see that the community was really, really proud of their veterans. And it was one of those things where you're like, this would be a cool thing to have in Summit. And unbeknownst to me, you've been working on this, so thank you for pushing this through. I think it's a fantastic idea, and it's a great way to, to honor, you know, our veterans who do so much for our freedom and our way of life. I do have a couple of questions, though. So, when you talk about these brackets, the, the bracket, like, when, when these aren't up there, what would people see? Are they, do these brackets stick out, or does most of them come, does it come off when you take them down? Like, how, how does that work?
So, my understanding is that there are two parts to the bracket. There's a, a permanent part that would stay on the lamppost or telephone pole, and then there's the arm of the bracket on which the banners hang, and that part is removable. So you won't see things sticking out of lampposts and telephone poles, but you will see some piece of hardware that will, will remain. I think on lampposts, it may be that you would want to paint that the same color as the lamppost, which I think are green, to make sure it didn't, it wasn't an eyesore. I think on telephone poles, for the most part, there's enough other stuff hanging on telephone poles that it wouldn't, wouldn't matter to have the, the bracket.
And talking to these other towns, like, what's the durability of these brackets? Like, my, my question is, do they last for three years, five years, 10 years, or do we not know? If they break, what's the plan to have them replaced, or what have you? Are there gonna be funds set aside for that, or will that be something that you'd envision the city would pick up? Like, how, how would that work?
I think the brackets are, they're made of metal, and I believe that they're fairly durable and intended to last 10 or 20 years, like any other sort of piece of metal, metal In the first five years, if the brackets were to, to break, there would, there would be funds available through, through the, or presumably there would be funds available. In, in future years, I think we would have to see what happens. If in 15 years, some of the brackets break and they need to be replaced, my sense is that either, you know, the city would have to cover the cost, or if I'm around, I'll, I'll dust off the fundraising and, you know, or someone else will, will take that up. I, I, I wouldn't imagine all of the brackets would fail at once, and, and if there were one or two brackets that failed, I think if someone had to write a check for a couple hundred bucks to buy some brackets, you know, as, as long as I live in Summit, I'm, I'm committed to do that.
And last question, as a follow-up to Matt's. So, if, if you, if you have a great problem, which is a lot of responses, it, when, when you talk about this idea of rotating and, you know, this is gonna be a, a situation where, you know, I, I would assume, like, people who are looking to volunteer, this is a very emotional thing for the family, this is, they're really proud of their, their relative that they're promoting for this, as they should be. Have you thought about that vetting process? Like, who's gonna decide, like, all right, who's up this year, who's not down this? Is there gonna be a committee? Is it gonna be run through Henry and the American Legion? How is that, how are the decision-making processes going to work around managing, you know, the, the banners and the display and that sort of thing?
Yeah. Well, first, let me say that it would be my hope possibly that we might find spots to hang all of the banners every year, and that this rotation of banners really is only a Plan B if we only have a limited number of spots and we can't find additional places to hang the banners, which is certainly possible, or we don't have enough money to buy the brackets. So, I, I think one thing that's been clear to me is that, other than the 10 banners for people of special merit, which will be decided by the American Legion, and, and we understand the, that's a very high bar, you know? We're talking about people, Medal of Honor winners and, and things like that. The other applicants, you know, I would see being, you know, people who apply in a certain order, and, you know, and who meet the eligibility requirements, the first 90 in, in first, in the first year. So it's based on the timing of submitting applications. In future years, I think similarly, it would be fair to not be passing judgment on whose banner should hang in any particular year, but really just to kind of rotate them in some sort of almost mathematical way. You know, if, if we have 50, 50 places to hang banners, and we have 150 banners, your banner gets hung once every three years.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Henry? Every member of the military when discharged receives a document called a DD-214, which lists the service, awards, and the nature of the discharge. Sometime after that, when they're no longer eligible to be called up from reserve status, either ready reserve or standby reserve, they'll receive a certificate of discharge. Both of those are official- Both of those are official documents that will certify service, honorable or other than honorable. In addition, there's a $250 deduction from property taxes for every honorably discharged veteran in Summit, and the city clerk has a list of those veterans, and they had to present proper documentation before they could receive them. There's also a group of veterans who are 100% totally and permanently disabled, and they get a credit from the state for their entire property tax bill, which requires documentation. And, starting this year, is a $3,000 New Jersey income tax exemption for veterans who served honorably, which requires submission of a DD-214 or some other valid document to certify the service. So I think validating veterans and avoiding the problem of stolen valor will be a relatively straightforward and simple process. I think it's a good question, I'm glad you asked it.
One more question for you, Henry.
Yes, sir.
So will the American Legion keep administering this in future years?
I don't know what you mean by administering. We are going to support Michael and his project in helping with the validation for appropriateness for people to be in the, in the program, and to identify those 10 veterans of special merit who may not have living family, or who may have done something just extraordinary that needs to be recognized without having the family apply for participation in the program. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Just a quick question. We're talking about the higher, not higher, but the priority, and you said live or work in Summit. And I would just be cautious that it would be someone who lived in Summit before necessarily someone who just works in Summit. Not just works, but that works only in Summit, that some of the homeowner, that the hometown would maybe get a priority over working in Summit.
Yeah. I've talked to the other towns who apply similar criteria, and the biggest number of people who will fall under the worked in Summit are members of our police, fire, and EMS.
Okay.
And I think that we probably want to...
Oh, absolutely.
I hear what you're saying. And maybe depending on what happens in the first year, maybe in future years, we might, we might tweak that. If we get someone who, you know, worked for six months at, you know, a local store and applies for a banner, if we get too many people like that, I could see why, what you're saying. But I suspect that we'll mostly get people who are working in police, fire, and EMS.
Michael, thank you for all your research and your presentation, and thank you as well to SAPF and, you know, all the other supporters. But, so I think it's a great, but I just think the process bothers me just a little bit, because I think, like, just now, right now, that an example of maybe tweaking it six months for maybe someone who doesn't live here but worked here for six months. So I guess my question is, I get that you can validate it through the DD-214 or whatever it is, in terms of their service, because stolen valor was a concern I had. But who's actually going to be the person or the group that goes through each application, makes sure that the service record is accurate, and makes a decision about, this is the one, okay, and these are the first 90? And then, and who is going to continue doing that over the next several years? Just because I don't want us to be sitting here and having people coming in and accusing us of, you know, playing around with the very distinguished careers of people in our armed forces, and that, do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, I just need, somebody at the end of the day has to be responsible, and it can't, it can't be us, because we're not involved.
Right.
But I do, I want you to know, I do want to be supportive.
Thank you. It's a good question and a valid concern. So let me walk you through what, at the moment, is the process that I'm imagining. And that process would be that there needs to be someone, and for the time being, that person is me, who is, is leading the program and gathering the information and collecting the forms and the photographs and the sign-up sheets. And, you know, for better or for worse, at the moment, that person is me, and I'm willing to do it. And then, on the sign-up sheet, which I think may have been provided to you, unfortunately don't have it to display, it does require individual applicants to submit this DD-214. And we also say, or other appropriate documentation of their service, on the theory that it, there may be special cases where people don't have ready access to that document. So what I would envision is that, for most people, they'll send in their DD-214, I'll take a look at it, maybe the first couple I'll review with Henry, so I know how to read them appropriately, and I will make sure everything appears to be in order. The name matches, it says honorably discharged, the dates of service that they've listed match, et cetera. I'm happy to run all of them by Henry, if he's willing to sit with me, that would be fine. I'm just trying to be, think about how to efficiently use his time. I would imagine that I would call Henry only if there were people who didn't submit a DD-214, or there was something odd about their DD-214, where there was something to actually discuss. For example, Henry and I discussed the fact that for a period of time, people who were homosexual were not given honorable discharges, they were given general discharges. And that might be a case where, depending on, you know, a discussion with Henry, if we were able to identify that, that might be a reason to, you know, admit someone to the program who otherwise isn't eligible on its face. There may be cases where someone's, you know, from World War I, you know, where the DD-214, you know, there are certain cases I read online where documents were destroyed in various fires in the past and aren't available. So those are the cases where I would want to work with Henry and the American Legion to validate whether someone was eligible. But I'm anticipating it will be probably a small minority of the applicants, and that most people will have their papers in order and will apply. To answer your question about future years, again, I'm willing, I have no, I have three children who are young, I have, I don't plan to go anywhere anytime soon, and I'm perfectly committed to run this program and administer the program for the foreseeable future. But I do, you know, imagine that if something were to happen to me, or I were to move, either in the near term or the far term, there would be, need to be a succession plan. I had discussed with David and Marjorie the idea that the council could constitute a committee to, you know, oversee this program. I think, for the time being, the feedback I got was that that was not necessary, we don't need more committees in general. But I'm certainly willing to hear any thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, Marjorie.
I just wanted to say thank you to Michael Arline for all the work he's done on this. He's spent a tremendous amount of time on this, and also to Frank Maciosi, and to Henry Bassman, and Lou DiSocio, and everyone who's, and all the city staff who've pitched in to answer questions and try and get this moving forward. So thank you all.
Thank you. And I was trying to find an appropriate moment to thank Marjorie, who was my primary contact on the council, and who similarly spent hours and hours with me, working through all the little details.
Well, yes. Marjorie, you've gotten yourself a running start with this project. And it's also thanks to Paul Cascades, who's been working with Michael and Marjorie on this. I know that folks have many legitimate questions about what could happen in the next couple of years. But like any project, you need to get it off the ground first, there'll always be tweaks to things, and then we'll figure it out. We can't answer every single question beforehand and anticipate every single contingency beforehand. This is not a project that other towns have not started. We already know that New Providence and Berkeley Heights have done it, and done it successfully. And I'm sure that they had to deal with similar issues that we are confronting. I'm also confident that in this community, that once starts going off the ground, there will be people coming out who will want to help, because that's the community we live in. And Michael will not be alone in trying to figure this out, and who will be there to help. I think there'll be plenty of people who will say, well, not only should we have banners, but we should have little descriptions on websites that tell you a little bit of the history, as Henry did, of who these people are. Because it's not enough to know the name and the rank, but also their contribution, which in many cases is extremely significant. And so I would ask us to think, because this will be an issue that we will discuss at the next council meeting, whether or not to approve a resolution on this matter, but ask us to think that any project requires thought and consideration and deliberation. But this is the type of project that brings a community together. This is the type of product, project, that really honors the sacrifice of those who have gone before us, and those who are here with us. It is the type of project that instills in young people a sense of country and of commitment to country. And I think those are all important principles in the day and age that we live. So Michael, again, thank you for coming with this presentation. Thank you for all of you who have spoken out in support of this presentation. I am positive you are not alone, and we will get a very enthusiastic reception in this town. Thank you.
Okay. We will take a minute and let Aaron set up for the next presentation. All right. Aaron, you're up.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Today, we're going to do a little bit of stormwater training. So in 2004, the state passed the New Jersey Stormwater Regulations, also known as NJAC-7 colon 8. Those were original governance that came from the Clean Water Act in 1972, and, you know, the mission statement there is to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the nation's waters by preventing point and non-point pollution sources. So the regulations, they address quantity and quality of stormwater runoff, and as part of those regulations, the city had to obtain a permit to actually discharge the rain that falls upon the city, our runoff. Much like private sites do, we have to get it collectively for the entire city. Permit is certified annually, it's a five-year permit. We were operating on an extended one for a couple of years. It was renewed January 1st. There are some changes, I'll get to those a little bit later, but I'll give you a brief breakdown of what that actually means. Permit requirement, we are a Tier A municipality, which about 70% of the state is, it's more urban, suburban versus rural. Both have challenges, but ours are Tier A. Those are some of the things that are required as part of the Tier A permit. I'll go through those individually as we move along. One of them right there is the storm drain labeling and inlet head upgrades. So as you can see on the left there, some of you might remember those, some still exist, but many people have lost a tennis ball, maybe a small pet or a child down one of those at some point. But those have now been banned, because they just let too much in. So now your approved spacing is only a two-inch, you know, slit or hole or gap, which you see on the right photo, and they also have to be labeled, which clearly say drains to river or ocean or lake, whatever is appropriate. You know, generally, ours all just say to a river. But those are those there. They all have to be upgraded as we go along. We've been a little bit proactive, but mostly as we do capital improvement projects is when we swap them out, a little more efficient that way. Outfall mapping is another key component of our permit. There's 105 outfalls in the city. They are inspected annually. One thing we look for is scour detection, which is just basically when you have a hole underneath the pipe from the runoff that's hitting it, that creates erosion, that puts sediment downstream, so we try to monitor that. The pipe on the bottom kind of shows you how you prevent that with that riprap rock underneath. The pipe at the top is something we look for, illicit connections, kind of brown water coming out of a pipe. It's not good, especially if it's, you know, the dry season, that means you have something connected illegally, so we look for that. As part of our permit, we had to pass several ordinances regarding how we maintain our stormwater and various items that pertain to that. These are, have all been on the books for about a decade now, about 2005 is when we put most of them on there, but they do include wildlife feeding, which you'll see at parks that you're not allowed to do. Dumpster covers on non-construction dumpsters, so your restaurants and businesses, how waste is collected, the inlet catch basin heads we showed earlier. Private developers on private property have to now put the conforming grade and head on them. Street sweeping is something that is actually required to be done monthly on streets that are less than 35 miles per hour, commercial areas like the downtown, anywhere that's curved, which is, you know, 90, 95% of the town, and as the weather permits. So we generally are out every month of the year, occasionally when you get a bad January, February, and things are frozen, we won't make it out, but we meet that, and there's a, actually, if you recall, last year, that is the new sweeper on the bottom right that was purchased. Conformance to the stormwater regulations also is controlling the quantity that you permit developments to put back into the system. So some of the ways that's done is, the previous picture just kind of showed a detention basin, now you see rain gardens, which are becoming more popular, and these, which you see a little bit, almost too much, is the seepage tank, which gets thrown in the yard, and they put it back into the soil for percolation. Part of the good housekeeping requirement is maintaining our infrastructure as well as our facilities. So we do, we are required to inspect and clean our catch basins on a five-year cycle, so it sounds easy enough, but that's about 400 per year then, we do have over 2,000. Repair them as necessary, and then the material you take out of it, you have to treat accordingly, you can't just throw that into the compost, because some of that could have road contaminants. So DPW yard, good place for non-point pollution, so a lot of housekeeping goes on over there. Biggest one is salt. You see, we have two domes there to prevent that from just washing in. But they have to wash your vehicles indoors, which they primarily do, and fuel operations have a standard operating procedure, and they all receive stormwater training on what to look for as they are out in about quite a bit. And lastly, we have public outreach and training. So this kind of changed the most with the new permit, trying to, you know... Trying to, you know, over 10 years into this, they probably assume there's some complacency with how we are educating and getting the message out about stormwater, so they've kind of overhauled it this year. What it used to be was a point system, where every year we had to get 10 points. Now, they've upped it to 12, but they've changed how you get points and what you're required to do. You know, one example, we put posters at events, which we show there, you know, National Night Out, and we have the community night, but the mayor does send a letter out every year with the third quarter tax bill, I believe, explaining some of the stormwater ordinances, which used to be five points. And, sorry, Mayor, you're down to three points right now? So, now that said, council training used to be two points, and you are now zero, we get for this, but you're required to do it. So, we're going to have to hustle a little bit more and come up with some new ways to get the word out through cleanup events. They want a lot in the city website, which we've already begun to do. So, council will receive training every two years now, so you won't have it annually, but in the off year, you are required to do some homework. You have to watch a stormwater video. I will send you the link in the next few days just to have it. I'll have to resend it next year. There is a four-minute one. There's also a 40-minute one. I have to kind of lean towards the four-minute one. So, and that's kind of the permit requirements. So, while we have some new faces, I want to talk a little bit about stormwater itself and just drainage, because a phrase you'll hear a lot is the 100-year storm, which I always kind of joke, because it's a phrase created by engineers that only engineers can really understand, because the 100-year flood, I have pictures here from Margaretville, New York, so that's, we'll call that 100 years ago, and that's Hurricane Irene on the right. And the developer of that property rebuilt pretty rapidly after that, and then he was hit again. And he said he thought it was a safe bet, because it's a 100-year storm, so he figured he had maybe not 100, but at least 70 or 80 years. And he didn't. He wasn't so fortunate. But 100-year flood is a 1 in 100 chance of happening any year. So, in a perfect world, yes, it would be every 100th year, but it just means there's a 1% chance it could happen at any time. What does that mean in Summit? So, there's two classifications for 100-year storm. One is by actual volume. So, in a 24-hour period, 8.7 inches is what's been set as classified as 100-year storm. That's more like your Irene in 2011. You also have it for intensity, so if you get three inches of rain in a one-hour period, that would be classified as well, and that's comparable to what happened in June 2015. We had a pretty intense, like, microburst that came through, and only a portion of the town. So, and those numbers have stayed fixed for a pretty good while. They haven't been updated to address any changes in weather patterns, so that's kind of where they stay now. So, what happens when it rains here? So, the water that falls upon the city, discharged through 105 outfalls. We're located in three watershed management areas. Those are defined by the state, and we have 13 little subwatersheds in town. And we have watershed maps online that you could look at. Those are three main watersheds there. The Lower Raritan River is pretty much the southwest of town, like by Oak Ridge, and some of the county parkland goes that way. The southeast, Lake Bryant Park area, will make it through the Rawway River, and roughly 70% does go to the Passaic River. And it all winds up in the Atlantic Ocean. So, worthless trivial knowledge right here. So, what does it equate to when an inch of rain falls on Summit? Assuming about 50% absorption rate, which, you know, is safe, could be a little high. 51 million gallons would be entering the system from our 105 outfalls. So, if you put that in a train, that would be 1,500 of those oil tanker cars right there. So, imagine being stopped at the gate with three kids in the car and counting that one. That'd be pretty tough. So, how do we manage that? Proactive storm store and catch basin cleaning. And then land use, which is kind of good to speak of this, because later on tonight, you'll be discussing the possibility of reviewing our DRO. And that would be an opportune time now, because in the last 10 years, there's been a lot of, well, it's actually 14 years since it's been looked at, development in how stormwater is treated, so it'd be a great opportunity to look at that, but it is addressing, you know, impervious surfaces, meeting DEP drainage requirements, and then current technologies. You know, too often, technologies assume to be computers and gadgets, but, you know, some of it is permeable paving, rain gardens, so that, those are newer technologies that need to be looked at. We track flooding and hotspots through the citywide drainage assessment report, and then we try to tackle some of those on our annual drainage project that we do. So, the citywide drainage assessment report is listed there. That's a living document we created in 2007. We update it annually. And within it, there's, right now, currently, 66 projects are identified in there, 43 of which have been completed since we started the report. Three are currently under construction, six are designed and waiting construction, and three are currently under design. So, unfortunately, it does grow as areas change, and we have some development, but we've been doing a pretty good job of trying to keep that down low, and it's a great tool for master planning. There it is. It's currently posted on our website. I'll send that link out as well in the next few days right there, but it's, it was posted earlier today, the revised version. And then your role, and I don't just mean council before me, but also anyone who's watching or at home, but the key is to report some of these things to Department of Community Services. And some of them could be grease dumping, cleaning of grease out in the street into catch basins, the open dumpsters without covers on them for restaurants, flows during dry periods is usually something we want to take a look at, landscapers pushing stuff in the catch basins or even dumping in streams, and sometimes dewatering operations, which, again, it could just be a pool being drained, but it's something you could call us. And we're not here looking to throw people in stormwater jail, because a lot of it is just education. So, you know, we never will reveal who told us what, but we do want to try to do the right thing, and we'd appreciate your help in getting back to us. General inquiries, you could always call Engineering Division. We'd love to talk to anyone who's interested in this. And then, you know, the hazardous discharges is something that shouldn't be only when City Hall is open. If you do see hazardous dumping or discoloration in streams, you know, you should call the fire or police department to take a look at it. So, in conclusion, stormwater management is not a unique challenge just to Summit. It is not one just to Union County or even the state. It's wherever we've developed as a society. We have to do what we can to try to preserve, you know, our waterways to keep it so we have a future with them all. I show this picture of the Great Falls, because about 2/3 of our water does go over that at some point, and that's, you know, a location where the Industrial Revolution essentially began for this great country, and now it's somewhat disheartening that you can't drink the water there, swim in the water there, or even fish in the water there. So, which is maybe upsetting, but I can assure you, it is getting much better, and like, these rules and regulations, though at times can be a bit of a challenge, they are making a difference, which is a good thing. So, we just all have to do our part the best we can and see what we all can do. So, that is all I have.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Council President, I just want to add one more thing. If by any chance anyone of you spot a creepy clown lurking in our stormwater system, call the police chief. Got to get on that right away.
Anyone have questions for us? Mike?
So, I just wanted to clarify, I saw your picture, I thought it was great about, you know, the salt and stuff, but what is the trade-off? Like, I'm sure there are regulations, because we brine our streets all the time. And clearly, that brine, salt, goes into our stormwater management system, and, you know, saltwater in a freshwater river is not so good. So, what is, are there restrictions on how much brine we can put on the streets? Because obviously, that's a safety issue. We want to make sure that we don't have accidents and things like that. It's supposed to snow tonight. I'm sure all those guys are out right now brining our streets. So, how, what is, how does that work?
For how you brine your roads and put salt in your roads, there are no regulations, which is somewhat ironic, because they're so adamant about keeping the actual piles, but it's, you know, the old saying, and I'm not saying this is correct at all, but dilution's the solution to pollution. It is more diluted in the street than it is, it is running a greater distance to get to the river versus a pile of 1,200 tons of salt that, when it's getting rained on, it goes immediately. It's more concentrated, so. But there's nothing for how you actually de-ice in your winter operations. It's just the storage.
Okay. And then, as far as process going forward, I know, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but we are looking at the DRO. I know there's a lot of stuff that, you know, talking about collecting rainwater from houses, using that to water, you know, your shrubs and things like that, all, and these things have become much more cost-effective. Is, are you tasked to engage with, if we do do this planning process, around those types of things that might be, that could come out of something like this?
Absolutely. The whole department will have a role, from zoning to engineering, but definitely engineering on the drainage parts of it, because that's something that, yeah, there are a lot of technologies that just didn't exist in 2004 when it was last looked at.
Right.
So, and then we need to work with those someone.
Great. Thanks, Aaron. I know you guys do a great job with this, because it is, it is important, and when they back up, it's really bad. I mean, there's all sorts of areas around town where, you know, sometimes it doesn't flow as well as it should, and we hear about it, and it's very damaging to the local residents. So, this is important for the environment, but it's also important for a lot of people's chief asset, which is their homes.
Any other questions? Questions, comments? Any questions from the members of the public? Aaron, thank you for the presentation. Stormwater is a huge issue, and you're absolutely right. As towns and cities think about the issue of stormwater, there are many innovative solutions and ideas that are being proposed in different places and tried out. And I think as, you know, depending on what we do with the DRO review process, when we consider it in a few minutes, it's certainly one of those things that I think we should look carefully at some of what other people are trying out and seeing, because, as mentioned, it is not only an environmental issue, but it's an infrastructure issue, and it's a, in that sense, it's a fiscal issue for the town, because depending upon how much water we go through our systems, we can deteriorate our own infrastructure, which ends up costing us money in that sense. So, the more that we can retain on-site, as far as stormwater, the better it is, not only for the environment, but also for tax dollars. So, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we come to the point in our agenda that we ask for public comments on matters that are not on the agenda for council for consideration. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Move along. There are no ordinances for hearing tonight, and so we will move on to resolutions. And for those of you who have followed our reorg meeting, we had a reorganization as far as how we're doing the consideration of ordinances and resolutions. That is, that we will have it introduced, the resolution. We will have an opportunity for council comments. The public will hear the council, will go through their set of comments, and then we'll have the public, having been informed of what council's concerns may be, be able to give their questions and comments about it and thoughts. And then after that, we'll have a second round of council comments and a vote. So, with that, I'd like Councilmember Fox to start us off.
Thank you, Council President. The first resolution is 5409 Buildings and Grounds. It's, this resolution is to authorize and support the submission of a grant application by the Reeves Reed Arboretum for $100,000 from the New Jersey DEP Green Acres Program. The grant will improve accessibility within the arboretum for visitors with disabilities. The Reeves Reed Board will contribute up to $100,000 in matching funds as required by the grant. The city will not be required to contribute any matching funds. The project has a total cost of approximately $500,000, and the arboretum will seek additional grants and donations for the balance of the project costs. This project will create an ADA accessible approach to the main lawn and other gardens, and will also fund the creation of a sensory garden for the vision impaired. This is the second phase of the arboretum's accessibility project. The city is authorizing the submission of the grant application, because the city owns the property on which the arboretum is located. This is a project that will allow more visitors to enjoy and make use of the many wonderful offerings at the Reeves Reed Arboretum. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from council? Comments from the public? Hearing none? Do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
Just call for a motion.
Just, okay. Do I hear?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any close? Nope. Okay, next. Councilwoman, I mean, Fox.
Resolution, Buildings and Grounds Resolution Number Two, Resolution 5476. This resolution is to authorize an agreement for professional planning services with Burgess Associates in an amount in excess of $17,500 and not to exceed $58,000. This contract for professional services is being awarded without competitive bids in compliance with the local public contracts law. Burgess Associates has provided professional planning services to the city in the past and continues to act as the city's planner under an existing services contract. In 2016, the city completed its master plan reexamination, which identified the need for the city to comprehensively review and revise the city's development regulations ordinance, also known as the DRO. The planning board has recommended that the city revise the DRO, which has not been comprehensively revised since 2003, although in that time, two master plan reexaminations have taken place, and numerous land use law revisions have been completed. The DRO revision will create a cohesive and concise land use ordinance and will promote healthy and controlled growth in Summit. The work will be completed pursuant to a proposal submitted by Burgess Associates dated November 2nd, 2017, which formalizes the scope of services and sets hourly rates. The scope of services includes a review of the current regulatory controls in the DRO, incorporating new design criteria to improve overall character of development, incorporating input from city officials, residents, and land use professionals. Burgess will also prepare a comprehensive new set of zoning regulations, a zoning map, and subdivision and site plan ordinance provisions. The consultant will also review the DRO's administrative enforcement provisions and make suggestions for revisions. The revision of the DRO will help the city achieve the goals of the master plan. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Council for members of, comments from members of council or questions?
I have a question. Councilmember Fox. It says it's going to take 12 to 18 months. Is the total cost no more than $58,000, or is that just for this year, and then there'd be more later? Or...
Can you...
I would say that that's for the proposal that is being considered, and so whether it goes 12 months, 18 months, that's the not to exceed. So...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
Just one thing, you know, there, this, we have a master plan, and there were a lot of recommendations on this, so I just want to get a sense for process, how this is going to all pan out, and I know there are, thankfully, there are a few members of the planning board here, which is great. You know, one of the things in here, I know the planning board decided they had a priority subcommittee to focus on nine of the 28 objectives of the master plan, is that the thought for the planning board, when they're working with Burgess, is it going to focus on those nine objectives, or is it going to incorporate more of them? And how is that process going to be vetted? Or on what, you know, what we're going to direct our planner here to focus on?
Is there any other questions before, there are some members of the planning board here, colleagues of mine, and I can ask them to answer questions as presented, the other questions that people have with regard to the process or anything like that. If not, so Chair of the Planning Board, Bill Anderson's here, members John Keizer and Jay Brinkerhoff.
The Three Stooges here tonight. I'm Bill Anderson, Chair of the Planning Board. Jay Brinkerhoff is Vice Chair, and John Keizer is a member of the board. These two gentlemen helped put together the priorities, Councilman Turner, coming from the master... the master plan. And the most important thing, I think, in terms of all of those is to tackle the DRO. You've probably all seen it here. Here's my version of it here, as described earlier, thanks to Aaron, and terrific job Councilperson Fox did. It was done 2003. There's roughly 40 amendments to it between, in the 14 years. It's kind of a patchwork quilt of things. It makes it difficult for developers, and for our staff, and for us to administer. So, that really comes to be one of the most important things that came out of the master plan, is how to implement this plan and how to make it, you know, reasonably effective for our developers, our citizens, and staff. So, that's really the purpose of it, and why we think it's as important as it is, just because it's a major implementer. And Aaron, I thank you for your, you know, input in as well, because there'd be staff, quite a bit of staff time put into the process. I don't know if that answers your question, Mike. John did the study in terms of the nine priorities. Maybe if you have more questions about the priorities, see John.
Well, I guess that might be one of them. I know the update of the DRO was one of the priority.
Absolutely, yeah.
But the master plan had a lot of things, you know, the objectives that were, you know, people in Summit kind of wanted, or wanted to direct as far as when we thought about development and things like that. So, those things, I would assume, will, some of them will find their way in to this document that is going to be revised. And I guess my question is, is how are we, are you guys looking at vetting, is it just the nine, or this priority, or is there number 12 that might make some sense to get included? That's really my question.
This is the first one, and then the idea was to tackle this first, and then through the course of a year to a year and a half to two years, to tackle all of them as, you know, we prioritize them. So, John, maybe you can address the ones that we have, and you can talk about the priorities that we've set for them.
The planning board members established nine priority objectives of approximately 30. Of those nine objectives, there are approximately 30 to 35 strategies of a total of 200 strategies in the master plan. It's our intention to deal with all of those priority, six or nine priority objectives, and approximately 35 strategies inherent in those, dealing with recommendations from our subcommittee, and dealing with Joe Burgess, who will be defining aspects of the DRO to deal with those strategies and objectives. But the nine priorities were established by every member of the planning board in a straw ballot defining those objectives, because there was just too many objectives and strategies to deal with in the master plan in this initial attack on it.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you.
I'm Jay Brinkerhoff. Mike, you asked a good question. It's one we struggled with. And the way I, we've spent a lot of time on this, I think a way to think about it is, a master plan is very long-term, it's very aspirational, and I think many of us who worked on it, and many of you, of course, we accomplished much of that. Where we then focused was, let's be sure this doesn't sit on a shelf for ten years. I don't know how many times I said it, and others did it at the planning board. And as we tried, therefore, to address the goals, we realized that the single best way we could approach as many of them as possible was through the DRO. The DRO is a very different document, though, as you're aware. It's very specific, it's very technical, and it is a step-by-step process. It provides the rules and regulations under which things can and cannot be done in town, in city, as opposed to, of course, the master plan. They, of course, have to work together. So, I think I'd almost reverse what you said a little bit earlier. I think as the DRO hopefully is updated and refined and brought to take advantage of the numerous changes that have occurred in land use and in development in recent years, it will be done with the context of what are the goals that we're trying to achieve through this. So, I see this as the mechanism through which we may be able to implement some of those longer-range and aspirational ideas that are encompassed in the master plan.
That makes sense. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Well, thank you all for considering. We hope that you approve it, because we're ready to go to work.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let me just say, having also served in the, or serving on the planning board, this was a process that the planning board thought about, how we do this. And it was very important to us, as Jay Brinkerhoff pointed out, that this is, that we don't have a document that simply sits on the shelf. Public came out in, to give their thoughts and comments in the master plan process. We wanted to make sure that those thoughts and comments, and how people wanted to see the city develop, were actually taken from a document that is, has aspirational aspects of it, and then it has aspects that intersect with each other. It isn't that the master plan is written in such a way that one section has nothing to do with the other. There are multiple connections between each. And so, while there may be nine criteria they're focusing on, that is the elements, and then you go out from there. It's like tentacles on an octopus, and it reaches much wider towards what the issues are that the public wants us to deal with. The DRO is designed to, is a legal document, it's a technical document, but it is a guidepost to residents and developers and staff as to what is permissible and what is not. And so, what becomes aspirational becomes concrete into something that can be worked. I look at this resolution as part of, even if you look at our, putting the permitting system online, this is part and parcel of that, which is to try to make the process transparent, to try to make the process easier to understand and to modernize. And so, when we send out, when we, if we are able to approve of this, this is part of what will help us move forward as a city and make ourselves competitive as a city to people who are interested in development. But it also makes it so that our residents understand exactly what's going on in the process. So, I would encourage all of us to support this. Call for a vote. Oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just in that vein of transparency, just for the public, we keep using this word DRO. You know, it means Development Regulations Ordinance. So, for people following at home, I just, as a suggestion, when we are doing these resolutions, I think we should try and refrain from using acronyms to the extent we can, because we know what we're talking about, but the vast mass majority, quite rightly, have no idea what that stands for. So, just important for people to know that.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on, third resolution from Buildings and Grounds.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds, Resolution Number Three, which is 5466. It's, this is a resolution to appoint two zoning board members, alternates one, number one and four. And we had two vacancies on the zoning board after our appointments meeting, and we are filling two of those positions tonight. I move the resolution to appoint Maureen Lewenberger as alternate number one, and Catherine Hensel as alternate number four.
Second.
Comments from council? Comments from the public? Any other comments from council, questions?
These are two great candidates that we've spoken to, we talked about in the closed session. I'm very happy with this choice.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Finance and personnel. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Finance, Resolution Number One, is number 5471, and this is to authorize transfer of appropriations in the 2017 operating budget. This is essentially a bookkeeping matter, where we're transferring funds from two funds that had surpluses to a fund that had a deficit. And this type of bookkeeping is allowed by law to take place during the first three months of the next calendar year. So, I would move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from council? Comments from the public? Any other comments from council? Okay. Is it roll call?
Yes. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
President Nigel.
Aye.
Finance Resolution Number Two is number 5465, with, is to authorize exception to bidding agreement in excess of $17,500, and it is to retain the services in the 2018, 2019 year for risk management consultant services. This is a change in our risk management consultant services. For Summit, we had previously retained the services of Bollinger, but this year, it was felt that it would be advisable to put a request out for proposals. The city received a number of proposals, and the one that was chosen was for AccraSure, and we're going to be retaining their services. They had put together a very good proposal that gave the city a lot of services, and is going to free up some staff time that they were previously spending. So, I would like to move this resolution for approval.
Second. Comments from council?
I just see in the research that AccraSure is, does a lot of work in New Jersey and is very well-respected in New Jersey.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Further comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Finance Resolution Number Three is number 5456, and this is another authorization for services. This one is for legal services, and specifically tax appeal counsel, and it's to retain the firm of DeFrancesco, Bateman, Kunsman, Davis, Lair, and Flom, not to exceed $185,000. It's specifically to retain the services of Martin Allen, who, while he was not our city tax appeal counsel, did serve as our tax appeal counsel in the Atlantic Health Agreement this past year. And I would move this resolution for approval.
Second. Comments from council?
Yeah, so, I know, we, I'd just like to thank, sorry, not listening, but we did use Saul Wolf for many, many years. Saul is kind of a giant in the legal community around appeals, and I think he did a very nice job for many years. I know he wanted to kind of move on different things, but I do want to thank him. And I certainly agree that Mr. Allen did a great job working with us last year, engaging with Atlantic Health. His advice was spot-on and timely, and I think he's going to do a great job going forward. I did have a couple, one question, though. I know in prior years, we have budgeted $200,000 for this service, and we see we're doing $185,000. Is there some rationale around that, or is that kind of what we've been tracking recently?
Councilman, we actually reduced it last year.
Yeah.
To $185,000. And then there was additional funds that we had budgeted for our litigation with Overlook. That's settled, but we're keeping the $185,000 at that level. Based on my conversation with our tax assessor, we feel that's sufficient amount of funds to have with this contract.
The only comment I would make on that, you know, we've just had a new tax law passed in Washington that is going to limit the SALT deductions, which, if you read Moody's, Union County's going to be the worst affected county in the country. I think we're tied, so, you know, small consolation. This is going to have a big impact on particularly high-end homes around the country, or around high-taxed areas, which New Jersey unfortunately is one. And I've noticed it in my neighborhood already, that houses are repricing. What you thought was a good house would sell for you, I'm kind of amazed at what some of these properties are selling for. So, they're going down, and that's a fact, it's economics. I just worry that we will see quite a few people coming to the city to look to appeal their property taxes. I think, you know, thinking this SALT thing through, we're going to have a reapportionment of property tax liabilities from, you know, the lower-priced homes in town are going to be paying a greater percentage of our property taxes going forward than higher-priced homes have traditionally. And that's going to be a process of assessment, and I just worry that, you know, this number, whether that's going to be enough to cover it.
Councilman, we actually have discussed that possibility. No way to know at this point of the volume. But given the relatively small amount of pending tax appeals and the work associated therewith, I believe that we've taken that into consideration, that there could be an unusual influx of at least county tax appeals this year in April. But we'll better assess it. Certainly, if we see a large volume come in early, we could always adjust before we release the budget. But I think this amount right now, and based on our conversation with the tax assessor, we feel pretty comfortable with this number.
Any other comments or questions? Comments or questions from the public? Any further questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Last one.
Finance Resolution Number Four is number 5472, and this is pursuant to closed session held earlier, and to, this resolution authorizes extension of sick leave without pay for a division of Public Works employee. I'd like to move this resolution for approval.
Second. Comments from council? Comments from the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Works. Can we bundle some of these words?
Good idea. You know, the snow is coming, right? So, Council President, I'd like to bundle Works One, Two, Three, and Five. So, tonight, we are presenting several resolutions for professional services related to the Public Works function, where we require additional engineering, we're outsourcing engineering work. The engineering department has worked with Summit's qualified purchasing agent in the process of a publishing request for qualifications, and together, they reviewed the proposals and are recommending the following. Do I have to write off every ID? Okay. Okay. ID 5450 is to authorize 2018 special consulting engineering services for sanitary sewer survey in general to Neglia Engineering Associates, not to exceed $100,000. They also, they are, all these firms are New Jersey firms, as in FYI. Two thousand, or ID number 5449 is to authorize 2018 special consulting services for licensed service remediation survey in general to Mott McDonald, not to exceed $200,000. ID 5448 is for special consulting engineering services for design survey inspection to Boswell Engineering, not to exceed 25, or $250,000. And ID 5461 is to authorize special consulting engineering for traffic survey in general to Macyr Consulting, not to exceed $100,000. All these firms we've dealt with in the past, they have provided excellent service, and all these amounts are less than what has been spent in 2017.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hold on a second. Sorry.
That's okay. I anticipated where you were going with that.
Any comments from council? Comments from the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Works, number four.
Number Four. Resolution 5346 authorizes the city engineer, Aaron, and Madam Mayor permission to sign permit documents prepared by NJDEP, NJDOT, State of New Jersey, and Union County. What we're doing is basically streamlining and expediting the approval process. Several times, we've had pro- Several times, we've had projects that were needed and required immediate approval from Summit, and in particular, over August, where we were delayed a project, correct, Aaron? Where by doing this, we are expediting the process. Aaron, the city engineer, will exercise sound engineering judgment and not jeopardize his hard-earned license. Additionally, when necessary, he will present to council if any additional action steps are required. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Comments from council?
What was the previous authorization? Who had authorized it previously?
It had to come to council.
Comments from the public? Any further discussion by council?
I, you know, these are tough decisions. You don't want to bog down a process, but, you know, if things go wrong, you know, we're going to get called for some of this stuff.
But stops here, right?
Yeah, so, you know, these are types of things that, you know, sometimes you're like, well, there's a reason that council authorizes these things, because they can be big projects or what have you. But I think in this instance, you know, we have a excellent city staff. They do a great job, and I know that they will, you know, form the particular body, if anything, and I think this is one of those things where it makes, it does make sense not to micromanage our staff in such a way, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree that I think we have excellent staff that knows exactly what they're doing with regard to these permit applications. Some of these, we see them year in and year out, but they make the same permit applications. And I think that we, as council, of course, have a continuing obligation to ensure that as things go on, that we keep an eye on it. And if this becomes an issue, we'll have to address it. I'm sure there won't.
That's my concern, is we do have excellent staff now, but what if they leave, and then there's other staff? And once you seed this, then it doesn't come back, right?
Can. Can. We can rescind resolutions and... Yeah. Any further comment, discussion?
This is just for this year, you mean? Just for 2018?
It is for this year, yes.
Yes. We'll evaluate how it goes. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, okay. Any opposed now? Works number six.
Works number six. 5464, Resolution 54, is authorized to execute an agreement with Bryant Park Condominium Association at 91 Springfield Avenue to provide reimbursement of snow removal and lighting for 2014 through 2016, plus five years rolling forward. These roads are considered, have the appearance of a public road. The city has calculated what it would cost the city to provide such services, and have come to an agreement with the Bryant Park Condominium Association to reimburse them for the past years. The light reimbursement is based on Summit's cost per light pole of $10.89 per month, while snow removal is based, was an engineer-calculated number based on linear street feet and what it costs us to clear the streets. For this property, it would come to $4.77, point, 4.7, it's a long drawn-out number, about $4.78 per inch. So the reimbursement is for 2014 through 2016 of $1,428.75. The property will be continued to be maintained by their current outside snow removal contractor to clear the pathways, roadway, and parking lot. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Comments or questions from council? Comments from the public? Any further discussion by council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving along, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time for council member comments or new business. Any council members? Council?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, although we didn't have any items that were up for a lot of discussion by the public, I'm very happy about the rule change in the council meetings to allow council to discuss resolutions and ordinances, and then allow the public to comment afterwards. I sat through a lot of council meetings before I was elected to this seat, and it was very difficult in listening to comment on ordinances when they were first introduced without hearing what the issues were and what was actually going on, and what the council was thinking about in introducing ordinances or resolutions. So I'm really happy to see this change, and I think it's going to allow the public to be more involved in the process and to have a better say in what's going on in the government, in our local government, which I think is always a great thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let me just say two things. One, this is Councilmember Fox's birthday, so she spent it with us, so happy birthday, Marjorie.
Happy birthday, Marjorie.
And secondly, we started off tonight's meeting talking about service and honored Tom O'Rourke for his service and dedication to our city. And then we talked about the service and sacrifice of veterans who have been in the city. Let me just close by remembering that yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. It was also the 20th year of service in the city of Summit with related to that day. You know, Martin Luther King Jr. Day is not only a day of service, but it's a day of considering the challenge that he posed to this nation with regard to living up to its ideals, and the belief that what was said on paper had to be honored in reality. And it is one of those things, when we talk about veterans who sacrifice, it is those people who have demonstrated through their lives the ability to live up to our highest ideals by defending the principles on which this country is founded, and whether that's through nonviolent protest or through services in the forces. People in this town have also served in accomplishing those goals, in living through a community that believes in diversity, believes that strength comes when we unify around a common set of principles about what we believe going forward, that it is better to be unified than divided, to speak out with one voice against those who feel that it is better to divide folks. And so it is a privilege to live in this community with people like that. So I thank you all, and that's before 9:30 tonight, and I wish you safe travels tomorrow. That, a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.